Started here.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Curry County's Zoom Candidate Forum for Port Orford City Council. I am Georgia Nalan, tonight's moderator. I'd like to introduce our Voter Services co-chairs Charlie Alexander and Mary Jane LaBelle. Mary Jane will be co-hosting the Zoom along with League member Colleen Bun. Charlie will be our timer. This is a third of four candidate forums that will be recorded and available on channel 182, CurryCountyVoices.com, LWVCurry.org, LWVOR.org, and Vote411.org via YouTube. The broadcast of tonight's Port Orford City Council Candidates Forum is being furnished as a public service by the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Any reproductions, recording, transcription, or other use of this program without written permission is prohibited. Let me begin with the League of Women Voters' mission statement. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose candidates running for elected office. Any voting person can be a member of the League of Women Voters. We have both men and women members and invite you to join. Because of COVID-19, this is a virtual candidate forum, a first for the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Our thanks to Paul Addis of the Coos Bay Library and a fellow community website partner of mine for his assistance with Zoom. Candidates running for Port Orford City Council are Gary Burns, Kim Ny, Tim Pogswizd, and Gregory Tidy. There are three open positions on the council. All candidates running for these contested positions have been invited to this forum. For the forum tonight, Mr. Pogswizd has declined. Here are some ground rules for tonight's forum. Unless you are asked to speak, please keep yourself on mute. Candidates will be asked to speak in rotating order. Initial speakers have been determined by verbal number drawing. Each candidate will be given three minutes for their opening statement. Once that portion is completed, we will go to the question and answer section of the forum. Questions have been collected from the public and League members prior to the forum. You will have one and a half minutes to respond. Our timer, Charlie, will have Mary Jane put up the 30-second sign on the screen when you have 30 seconds left. When your time is up, a stop card will come on the screen. Candidates, can you see the cards? Okay. I will now introduce the candidates. As previously mentioned, all candidates were invited to the candidate forum. Speaking first as candidate for the Port Orford City Council is Gary Burns, incumbent. Gary?
Yes, I'm Gary Burns, and I'm a woodcarver and was started carving in 1971 and started full-time in 1978. I've had a number of galleries and done art shows and just really still love carving as much as I did at the beginning. My partner Susan and I had lived in Grants Pass, and a friend of ours moved here in 2014, and we started visiting the town and very quickly got to know a lot of people and in no time wanted to move here and moved here in 2015. We built a tree wizard gallery on Jackson Street. My partner Susan is building a cute little tiny building next to the gallery. I was appointed to the council in 2019 by Mayor Podwitz and the council and have learned a lot and would like to serve the community for another four years if willing. And some of my main, two of my main concerns are creating an emergency plan for the community. Like to organize all the different community resources and to try to make each citizen as prepared for any kind of emergency that we might have, which could be quite a few different kinds. And also, I'd like to continue working on affordable housing, possibly creating an ADU, assisted dwelling unit ordinance, and create some affordable ordinances for building smaller homes. We really love this town and I, in other communities, in another community I lived in for 20 years in the Sierras, I was assistant fire chief and served the community in that way. And now that I'm almost 70 years old, I'm not able to do the fire department anymore. And so this is a way that I'd like to serve Port Orford and continue caring for Port Orford as much as I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tidy, your presentation.
Hello, I'm Gregory Tidy. I've lived in Port Orford now for nine years, born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona, and then left and went off into the US Navy, spent eight years in the Navy traveling around the world of 13 countries. And once I got done, I moved around a little bit, and I always wanted to come back to the ocean, so I picked Port Orford, sleepy little town, and I've lived here for the longest of my adult life. I have two sons that have went to the schooling system here in Port Orford, and I have one that's currently a junior in high school here at Pacific. And we try, I own a business here in town, and it's fun being a part of the community, and I want to be a part of the community at a more of a city level than as a personal business level. I think I bring a little bit different aspect and thought process to Port Orford. Yeah, I really enjoy this place. It's a fun, funky little town in the middle of nowhere, and we can achieve really good things here. We have a port that seems like it's about ready to flourish, and I think we can get some tourism and everything else here in town and really make this a destination for people on I-5 and everyone else that, you know, Grants Pass, Roseburg, making this more of a vacation town than just Port Orford. Yeah. That's me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and our third candidate here, Kim, give three minutes.
Hi. Okay. I've lived in Port Orford 15 years, and I came here originally as a teacher. Several different things since I've been here. I currently sell real estate. I've been volunteering since I was in middle school. I was a candy stalker, had the first group of hardcore volunteers, and I've made up volunteer activities. I'm currently on the board of Wally's House in Gold Beach, and I recently was treasurer there, and I was on planning and the base chair of the planning board for a while. And as with the newspaper, I covered a lot of city council meetings, so I think I understand a lot of how the city works. I went around yesterday and I talked to some people in the community and listened to what they thought were important issues. I hope to contribute to the water system, be supportive and helpful for that always improving, and I'd like to see our scenic and natural beauty protected. But mostly, I think I want to listen a lot. When I went around yesterday on my bike talking to people, they would like to see intelligent growth. So I think I'd just like to take my experience and make some good decisions in the little town that I've really enjoyed. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to be going into the question and answer portion of the forum. Questions collected from the public and League members have been screened by the Voter Service co-chairs for duplications. Each candidate running for the same office will be given an opportunity to answer that question. So I'm going to go ahead and start off in order, and it's going to be one and a half minutes for response. So I'm going to go ahead and present the questions, and maybe I'll start off with you, Gary, and we'll go with Gregory and then Kim, just like we did in the introductions first. So the question is, what, if anything, should the city do to provide shelter, food, healthcare, or other services for the unhoused? Would you like me to repeat that?
I think I've got that. I currently serve on the Common Good Board, and we work on bringing food into the community. And through that organization, we have a kind of a handle on a lot of people that are in need, that as well as the new health clinic, Coast Community Health. So to me, it's a matter of networking and finding these people and then connecting them with the services that we have available. And we have quite a few services available, and that's part of what I really enjoy about is small communities, that the networking is pretty immediate. If something goes out on Facebook, that there's a need, I've seen a lot of really neat things happen, and that's my take.
Okay, that was just the 30-second sign, but all right. Greg, could you answer that question, or would you like me to repeat it?
I think I understand the question. I think that we have transient, not really a considered homeless population here in Port Orford, a lot of transient, a lot of people that don't stay here for too long. And like Gary said, I couldn't reiterate more. And once, we have a little group on Facebook, and man, if something gets put out there about somebody in need, it seems like it's really filled really quickly here. So I just think continuing that in the growth and the, you know, here in the community, I think we're doing a really good job, way better than we were nine years ago when I first moved here. So I think we're already progressing in that manner, towards helping out people in need when they come in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
I'm third, and I think that the first two candidates gave great answers, and I think they said a lot of it. I too have seen the community be generous and come to the table and help people out when there was need. I know the regulars who are always giving food out and really helpful, and I think we all just need to be kind with the people going through. We're a small community, we're not really a destination, and I think we've been helpful. I've watched the people in the community be helpful to those people in need. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This next question is actually for the, it's worded for the new candidates that would be Tidy and Ny, and I'll start with you, Kim, actually, and then have Gregory answer it next. How many city council meetings have you attended in 2020?
I've just been following the minutes online. I haven't attended any meetings. I've been attending my Wally's House meetings, and I am partly applying for this position to be more involved as the community is getting a little more closed with COVID, and I think more people need to participate, so that's why I'm here. And I'm just following the minutes online. So I have not attended any council meetings in 2020, but I've probably attended, you know, 30 or 40 county council and county commissioner meetings altogether in the past. So I'm pretty familiar with how they go. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Gregory?
Myself, I know I attended, I think, the January meeting, but then everything really has gotten funky this year. I know I've stood outside once, I think in April, with the other, with Gary and Tim and everyone else, we did it outside the city hall, out on the patio, like an impromptu meeting before we started doing the Zoom meeting. So that's really, this is sort of a tricky question, just because before this, I'd been to a lot of city council meetings, just because owning the business in town, if something, you know, if something came up, I needed to be there just in case. So this year's been tricky. I've attended, like Kim said, the meetings and everything else on the minutes and follow those, but only the first meeting of the year.
Okay, thank you. This question is for all candidates, so I'm actually going to have you start, Kim, and then we're going to have Gregory, and then we're going to have Gary. And the question is, do you think Port Orford has a water problem? Please explain your answer.
I guess I think Port Orford has a water problem. It's had a problem since I came here in 2006. We're a very small community, probably the smallest incorporated city I can think of, so it's hard to come up with the revenue to really fix everything that gets needed. I know there's a part of town where development or water and sewer availability isn't available at this time, and that's kind of hard on the property owners. I know a lot of work with the water treatment plant, or it's planned to be done here soon. It seems like we have less pipe drinking than we did in the past. I know the people in the water department, I'm a big fan, and they did a great job. So I just need to be supportive in any way, vote in their support and help them out with fixing the water problem. And I think many, many communities have water problems, so this isn't something that can't be remedied for.
Thirty seconds.
I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gregory?
If we're considering water problems, no, we're not Flint, Michigan, or anything like that. Yes, we do seem to have some problems with our water system. I have filters on my house just as a precautionary measure, but sometimes it, the water is a little ripe, I should say. But I live here in town, I've lived here inside the same limits for the last five and a half years, had city water, and I've never had a problem per se. I know there is problems here in Port Orford with loss of water and everything else, but it seems like every time we've tried to get a levy or something like that for taxes, it's always failed. So it doesn't seem like there are enough people in Port Orford think that it's a problem that we need to fix it as quickly as some others would like it to be fixed. That's it.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, the biggest issue is the infrastructure of the delivery system. Some of the pipes, most of them are 50 years old, and there were quite a few that are much older. So the entire system is outlived its life, and the treatment plant is very old. It's treating the water just fine. Quality of the water is not an issue. It's the water loss that we have each month, which can, in the winter, when our volume goes down, our loss can, we can lose half of the water that we treat through leakage. During the summer, when we're using more water, we get less leakage just because there's less pressure on the lines because so much water has been used. So that our, with the money that we have available at this point, we will, we just keep trying to repair the leaks. We just had a big leak on Jackson Street, and we repaired it, and that's the way we're going until we can get some interest in the community to raise a bond and generate more
Thank you. Okay, the next question is going to be for the candidates, Gregory and Kim, and I'll have you start this time, Kim. And the question is, if you are elected, what will you contribute to the city council?
With decision-making, I'm well researched in a lot of the topics. I consider myself a great communicator, good listener, but I'd like to also research some of the issues I saw on planning. I wasn't always quite prepared for what came up, and I think a lot of research, thinking for yourself, talking to the community, is all part of making good decisions. I'm in business where people seek me out and they ask me questions, so I get to be part of that conversation a lot. And I have a lot of experience with volunteering and working with other volunteers, so I think that's what I'll bring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you ask this one more time, just real quick?
Sure. If you are elected, what will you contribute to the city council?
I think I, as a business owner here in town, I'm trying to grow business here in town for what's, what we have available on Front Street. There's a ton of open businesses, you know, that's been sitting idle for a while, and I would love to see some of those actually, you know, full of some sort of business. And I think I can, we can bring that with a little more travel and everything else, especially in the summertime. This COVID this year has really screwed up a lot of stuff for everyone, but I think we can rebound from that next year and move forward and really try to hit Port Orford more as a destination place, and I think that would be a good thing. I also think that I've just been part of the community, and a lot of people know me here in town and see me riding my bicycle around town every single day, and anyone can come and approach me, and everyone knows that. So I think that I bring that, I bring that I'm a part of the community. I'm the commander of the American Legion here in town, and I think it'd just be, I've been wanting to do this the last two elections. I've got fourth place the last two elections, so I'm ready to get third place or better this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, this question is for all you, and I'm just going to go ahead and have you, Gary, answer, and then Kim, and then Greg. The question is, do you think Port Orford should enact an off-street parking ordinance that covers new development?
We've had quite a few issues with off-street parking, and there are situations where off-street parking is really not an issue at all, it doesn't bother anyone. Our ordinances currently are complaint-based, and I kind of feel like that that's the way Port Orford's been all these years, and that's why we all kind of enjoy living here. If we had a code enforcement officer coming through, we have a lot of people having to move out because they wouldn't be able to fix their places. And so I'm a opponent to, if it's not bothering somebody to let it be, but when people are parking in places that are bothering or unsafe, then we need to address those immediately. And that's, that's kind of the way that we work, and there's enforcement of all codes is a very tricky situation that we work with all the time.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Sorry, I was still on mute. I too don't necessarily want to see an ordinance, and enforcement would be an issue. I think a couple signs in a few places might be nice, some no overnight parking spots. But if they're complaint-based, I wish that people would be neighborly and listen to their neighbors. I haven't seen a problem recently, and it seems to be a neighbor dispute, and I would hate to see the whole town have to have an ordinance, when I've only really heard one or two problems in my whole time here about parking. There's actually lots of room to park in different places. So no, I don't see an ordinance at this time.
Okay. Greg?
Well, I've actually dealt with somebody here in town owning a business and having my customers park in front of their plates, and we've had a couple discussions with the homeowner, and I've let them know that, you know, my customers are in and out in five, five minutes or less, you know, and they're trying not to be on 101, they're trying, so I think, like you said, we try to be a community here, and it is maybe with one or two people that are having problems with certain things. And I think, just like Kim and Gary both said, reaching out to, you know, your counselors and everything else, and letting them know what the problems are, and then we can, we can talk to the business owners or the property owners and try to be a community and neighborly instead of, you know, in some sort of law enforcement involved would be my option.
Okay, thank you. All right, for the next question, let's go ahead and have, gosh, I'm going to have you start, Greg, and then Gary, and then Kim. So the next question is, how is the city planning for post-disaster resiliency, fire, earthquake, major storms?
How is the city preparing for that? I mean...
Planning.
Planning, planning.
Post-disaster.
We're planning in a sense that we've always been planning over the tsunami sirens go off. Just the other day, the tsunami siren here in town went off for, I think about 10 revolutions, and I for a second merely thought, you know, let's, but it was just something here in town, an accident happened.
Let me clarify, this is for post-disaster resiliency, post-disaster.
I honestly don't know how we would do post-disaster right now, because we're such a remote community. It would be community. I think that we would all come together as a community, there's enough stuff here in town. I know there's enough farmers here in town that have enough equipment and everything, and if we needed to get out of Port Orford post, you know, you know, earthquake or something like that, we have enough resources here locally that we could probably do that, but I honestly don't have a good answer for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kim?
I know that groups are always planning and preparing routes if we have a disaster. When I was planning, they invited, I can't think of what, where they were from, but prepared groups and talked about having food at the high school. I think people are always having the discussion to be prepared for it, but I'd agree with Mr. Tidy.
I'm just going to clarify the question again for you, too. This is for post-disaster resiliency, after the disaster.
Okay, okay. So I do think that there are people that work on that in place. I think it's a work in progress, but I think there are people thinking about it and planning it, and it's important to them. They don't know where exactly it is today, but like I said, they talked about having a big food container at the high school that would be in a safe place, and talked about using the airport at St. Blanca. So I think people are thinking about it. I think people will rise to the occasion, we're a small community, and I think we're in a good place. That's good for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Well, that was one of the things that I thought of first when I was appointed and was pretty surprised that nothing has happened with emergency planning. And as I got involved in it, it became obvious why, because it's such a huge issue, and there's so many possibilities of how the community could get itself together. So that's something that I have been working on. I've got a small group of people that we're just going to be starting here soon to get together and brainstorm. Mostly, I would like to be working on some grants to get each, as many individuals in town, prepared with a water filter, the ability to poop in a bucket. to poop in a bucket and, um, to have some food on hand. I want to see some, um, situations in town where we can store blankets and, and, uh, water and food items. So it's, it's a, it's a very important issue, but it's an issue that, uh, is easily put off. And, um, I'm constantly working on, um, on Facebook, trying to remind people to get their go-bags together, even if you just do a little bit at a time. So I, I'm a real proponent of this and, um, and if elected, we'll be working on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is again, uh, questions for, uh, Greg and Kim. So I'll have you start, uh, uh, first, Greg. And this question is, if you are elected, which liaison assignments would you seek and why?
I would like to be in the Parks Commission. Um, I've been, uh, eyeing up, uh, doing some stuff in the parks. Um, my kid goes to the park every other day and, uh, goes hanging out at the skate park and goes walks around. Um, just getting with some more stuff. I've actually thought about putting a, a disc golf course in our little park. We already have a, a pitching, a, a, a little putt-putt golf course in a little city park in Buffington. And, uh, I would love to put a little pitch and putt, a disc golf course there, too, just to get some more community involvement. And the pickleball course seems really good. Um, I think the Parks Commission would be good and, uh, it was Parks and, I forget the other commission, I'm sorry. It wasn't finance, I put that. But I, I know for sure the Parks Commission is what I would like to go, uh, immediately, uh, you know, try to go into that side at least.
Great, thank you. Kim, I think you're still on mute.
Yep, I'm still on mute. Um, I'm not sure where I would go. I think I would just follow where there was a need. I don't, um, I'm not real familiar with this piece. Uh, I've been on planning, um, but, um, and I'm pretty familiar with the historical society, but, uh, I would just lead it to where there's a need. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, probably have, uh, Greg, why don't you answer this question first, and then Gary, and then Kim? And the question is, briefly, what are the top three issues that the city council should take on next year and why?
I'd like to do the affordable housing, number one. Um, there's, there's really nothing to rent here in Port Orford. It's all Airbnbs. The emergency preparedness that Gary had talked about also, that would be, that would be something that would be, really needs to get finalized. Those two for sure. And then obviously just trying to maybe get a, a grant for the water system, maybe. Um, that would be something that I would try to work towards, too. Let's go through.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Yeah, I, I feel emergency, um, preparedness, uh, and planning, uh, affordable housing and, um, and working on, um, some different ideas for bringing some, um, business into Since the COVID has affected us so much, um, there could be some ways that we can promote Port Orford and other ways. And so I, I feel like we need to be open to that and, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
I'd agree that we need to keep working forward on helping to solve some of the city water issues. Um, and I think that it's on everybody's mind, um, how to serve the transient homeless population. Um, and then I'm interested in, uh, protecting the scenic and natural beauty from my time on the Planning Commission. And I've been talking to other people and they would like to see that, too. I think that's part of smart growth for Port Orford. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So for the next question, I'm gonna have you go first, Kim, and then we're gonna go ahead and have Gary and then Greg. So the question is, how should the city council deal with violations of city ordinances, such as those for building permits, burning, and dark sky?
Uh, well, dark sky, I think the majority of it would take care of itself. The, the, a lot of citizens would like to just nicely knock on their neighbor's door and mention it to them. There's a closet full of light shields. And I think that before we work on enforcement, we wanted to try and do it through letter writing and just neighborly asking. We thought it would be more effective. Can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. How should the city council deal with violations of city ordinances, such as those for building permits, burning, and dark sky?
Yeah, I think, um, burning already that they deal with, uh, through the fire department and tickets, uh, they seem to do pretty well with that. Um, and, uh, ah, there's one more, one more. I'm sorry, it's kind of a three-part question. Um, and dealing with violations. I do think that there does come a time-
30 seconds.
I do think there does come a time where it could be helpful for someone else to knock on a door, like perhaps a city counselor or just, uh, a citizen. Or at some point, if we could ask a police officer if it was something that was dangerous and serious. I would like to see some enforcement sometimes, but I haven't seen too many instances where it needs to be done.
Time's up.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Gary?
Um, like we touched on earlier, I think enforcement is, um, a tricky deal. When there's complaints, then, um, we do have ordinances and, uh, mechanisms. But in the end, no counselor in the past, uh, in Port Orford's past has wanted to kick a person out of their home because they couldn't, uh, come up, um, bring their buildings up to code. And so it's a lot of the reason why there's places that there are in town, because the people can't afford to, uh, fix them. And, um, and it's just an ongoing problem. And, um, and we try to have, um, people that, that are concerned and complain, then we just try to work out each problem as it comes, um, using the ordinances as much as we can. Uh, we can put a lien on somebody's home and then it gets down to, um, if that doesn't get paid, then they could be on the street and none of us feel like we need any more homeless people. So, um, it's, it's not as easy as it seems, once you're in the council and you see some of these things and you, um, you, going in, you think that it's all gonna be a lot easier than, um, than it actually is. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, it, I, I think like previously, it's hard being third in this, because the, the two candidates previously really say exactly what, you know, you think. But I think we do a, we do a great job here in Port Orford. If we need something, we, we, we call the city. You can talk to, you know, Terry, you can talk to people at the city if you need, you know, when your complaints are heard here, it's not like they're falling on deaf ears. Um, I, I, I think the previous two said exactly what I-
Okay, thanks. This completes tonight's Zoom candidate forum. I'm out of questions. Uh, as mentioned earlier, the candidate forum recordings will be available on channel 182, CurrieCountyVoices.com, LWVCurrie.org, LWVOR.org, and Vote411.org via YouTube. Thanks to those organizations for making them available. And the League thanks you, the candidates, for participating, and to you, the viewers, for watching and learning about your candidates. You turned it off. Okay.
Thank you so much, League of Women Voters.
Yes, thank you, Kim, Gary, and Greg for-